...as a news reporter. I am also a Barnegat resident and therefore have a vested interest in the success of our schools. Of course, I'm also a taxpayer. I'm going to ask all of the candidates for the Board of Education to please stand so we can salute the flag.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am pleased once again to host a Board of Education Candidates Forum to allow voters to make educated decisions concerning their ballot choices. For those who may question why there are two one-year seats on the ballot this year, I'd like to offer some clarification. The Board appointed two individuals to fill the unexpired terms of two members who moved out of the district. It is now up to the voters to determine who completes the final years of those terms. While my knowledge of the district puts me in a position to dispute some of the claims we'll likely hear tonight, I will not personally and intentionally point out any discrepancies. Meanwhile, the only news article that will follow with my byline subsequent to the forum is one providing a link to the YouTube recording. You'll notice that I use the word "forum" a couple of times and not "debate." Please consider the difference between the two terms. In this case, the purpose of our discussion is to present views and allow you to essentially meet the candidates, make educated decisions. Alternatively, a debate presupposes the candidates intend to voluntarily and vehemently argue their points, and that still may happen.
Frankly, with nine candidates up here on the stage, we don't have any time for any back and forth. Some reminders, and this is an important one that I'd like to point out, in New Jersey and many other jurisdictions, Board of Education elections are nonpartisan. People can be Democrats, Republicans, independents, whatever they are. I did receive some questions to the forum email asking political affiliations, of which I politely said, "Sorry, I'm not asking." This includes someone who asked me to follow up with the candidates as to who is an America First follows an America First agenda. There is no purpose to that in this forum. I had originally, and this is important to note and very upsetting to me personally, I had originally hoped to include Barnegat High School students as part of the forum. However, due to the sensitive nature of some of the questions, students are not a part of this year's forum. The candidates have already been assigned random time slots, and while I realize it's hard for you to see their name tags when I introduce them, I'm going to ask that they initially stand when they give their opening statement so you can kind of figure out where they're sitting up here. This year, candidates have also been assigned closing time slots, at which time they can clarify or dispute any information they or someone else has provided. We will be giving time signals, I have two friends up here helping me out, when the candidates have reached their time limits. Hopefully, I won't have to make any calls up there to ask the mics to be shut off. The questions posed tonight come from a variety of sources. Some of them come directly from community members, others from issues identified from the year, or from statements provided by the candidates, and I will tell you, I've gone through campaign literature to come up with some of the questions as well. Candidates have the opportunity to raise their hands to respond to general inquiries. Some questions are directed to individuals. I have come up with a question for each of the candidates. Others may raise their hand to comment on questions directed at someone else. As you will know, there are nine candidates seated on the stage for this presentation. I want to tell you that they are seated in the order they appear on the ballot, because I figured maybe that would help you when you go to vote. George Fedorsik, who would be the 10th candidate and still is on the ballot, has asked me to receive, to read a statement from him concerning the reason he is not here this evening. "Good evening. Regrettably, I cannot attend this evening's Meet the Candidate Forum. Recently, I had a very positive change in my professional career that has not afforded me the necessary time to commit to my campaign. For many who know me, I have been extremely dedicated and involved over the last four years, both as a board member and as a parent, to ensure the success of our children and our school district. Missing the forum this evening was not an easy decision for me to make, but one that was necessary to ensure success for myself and my professional organization. With that in mind, I want to ensure the residents of Barnegat that if I am elected through the school board, I will be very grateful, but most of all, will apply the same level of commitment to our district that I have these previous four years. I welcome you to reach out to me with any questions at georgefor schoolboard@gmail.com and encourage you to view the last three Meet the Candidates Forum that I participated in, if you have not done so already. They can be found on the George for Barnegat Board of Education Facebook page. I believe local elections are where a person's vote makes the greatest impact. Tonight is your opportunity to learn about each of the candidates that are running for our school board. I hope this evening assists you in making the most informed decision when selecting a candidate that will be charged with the responsibility to help guide our children and district towards success. I want to wish good luck to all the candidates running this year." And then he ends it with "Go Bengals." Okay, so, we're going to start with the opening statements. Our first opening statement is going to go to, hold on one second, Colleen Angus. Colleen, I just asked that you stand up so everybody knows who you are, but you don't have to stand while you talk. Please proceed. The timekeepers are down here, just so you know.
Okay. My name is Colleen Angus. I grew up in Barnegat and attended the schools from 2nd to 8th grade, eventually graduating from some regional. I currently have a 4th grader in the district and I'm married in town. Been involved with the district through the PTA for four years, as a board member on various roles, for three of those. I currently hold the role of Vice President. As a board member of the PTA, I've advocated for events that support our students and staff in positive manners, such as Color Run and Chocolate Walk. I've decided to run for Board of Education in order to continue that mission of advocacy. I hope to be the voice that supports our district through discussing the issues that affect our children directly, such as teacher retention, fiscal responsibility, and expansion of services for all children in the district, including our special needs population. I truly believe that the district is at a turning point that requires us to put a Board of Education together that will work together to put our students and staff first."
Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off, but I got to cut you off here, so we're clear. Our next candidate to speak will be Mr. Sean O'Brien.
Hello. Good evening, members of the community. Thank you, Ms. Fawnin, for hosting this event. My name is Sean O'Brien. I'm a lifelong Barnegat resident and have two children attending schools in the district. You may know me as a coach for multiple rec sports teams in the community. As an Executive Director for a semiconductor equipment company, my strong background in budgeting, contract negotiation, and leadership have allowed me to have a positive impact on the board for our students, staff, and community. The past three years on the board have been a challenge. Our district faced reconfiguration during a global pandemic, aged and neglected facilities, low staff morale, and most importantly, low student performance, all because of poor decisions from prior administrations and boards. I did not vote in favor of reconfiguration. Unfortunately, once reconfiguration passed, the only thing I could do was work to make it as successful as possible. I instituted Committee of the Whole so every board member has a voice on the desk. I led a call for a culture and climate survey for our staff so we can hear what we are doing well and remedy what we are doing not. Transparency is key, and I have been part of that movement since day one. Informational parent nights, school sanctioned social media pages, and constant email blasts of what we are doing to keep parents engaged and informed.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ms. Carol Genie.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carol Genie. I have been a resident of Barnegat for the last 17 years. Over the years, I have been active on several community committees such as the Remembrance Committee, the Lunchbox Team, and the Go Red Event for 10 years. I retired after 36-plus years with the U.S. Postal Service as a Human Resource Specialist. As a Human Resource Specialist, I coordinated hiring for the northern New Jersey District. I also facilitated hiring of all new employees, including interviews and selection process. The reason I decided to run for a seat on the Board of Education is because I believe education is the backbone of any community, and I believe it's important to give back to a community I call home. I believe the focus and responsibilities of a Board of Education member should always be centered around the students receiving the highest quality of education possible. This includes ensuring that every child is in a positive environment.
Thank you, Ms. Genie. I hate cutting you guys off, but I have to be fair to everybody, and we have a lot to cover. Our next candidate is Mr. Maurice Enyard.
Good evening. I'm Maurice Enyard, and I've lived in Barnegat for 16 years. I'm married to Rose Marie for 53 years. I'm going for the Board of Education because I have a unique background that I will tell you about that uniquely qualifies me for this kind of a position. First of all, there's a segment in education. I have a doctorate from Rutgers University in education. I taught for 14 years. I was Teacher of the Year for the Woodbridge Township School District. The state of New Jersey funded me for a research project. Business, I've been a Corporate 500 Senior Management, and I've managed budgets from $10 million to $100 million. Technical, the New Jersey website, many municipal websites, internet, security, I'm very familiar with all of those things and up to date, and they are changing with the schools. The schools are keeping up to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Enyard. Mr. Michael Hickey, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hickey. I've been serving on the board for four years. I was a prior board president and I'm the current sitting Education Committee Chairperson. My resume and my I/O are online, and I'm going to focus a little bit more on the issues at hand. The reason I'm on for the board is because I want to continue the transparency and the amount of accountability that we provided to the district for the last four years that I've been. There have been some really big changes that happened in the district under the leadership of the current board, reconfiguration, facilities updates, and there's a lot of things that we need to continue the momentum on. What I'd ask is that you consider the people that have been doing the job for the last three years, under the gun of a global pandemic, and dealing with the tough issues versus the people who were in the past year who allowed things to deteriorate and decay, like the Edward School and other critical infrastructure and things that are academic achievement. So, I'm 1, 2, and 3G. I'm looking to excellence for Barnegat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Our next candidate to speak will be Mr. Scott Beck.
Hello. Thank you, Ms. Fawnin. Thank you, candidates up here, for participating tonight. My name is Scott Beck. I have pretty much dedicated my teenage and adult years to community service, from being an EMT on a volunteer first aid squad to being a lifeguard up in the ocean for 26 or 27 years, to now being a healthcare professional and owning a business. I see people at their best, I see people at their worst, and I sit on many chairs, I've chaired many boards, including Community Medical Center Emerging Leaders. I've named the 2022 Emerging Leader of the Year for Community Medical Center. I'm the immediate past Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee here for Barnegat Township Schools. I have an ability to bring people together, to listen at all sides, and to come up with a calm, collected, level-headed approach to all aspects of what we'll see on the board. Whether I believe in it, if I don't believe in it, we'll come together and...
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Dr. Beck, I apologize. Our next candidate to speak is Mr. Scott Sarno.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name is Scott Sarno. I've been a resident of Barnegat the last 23 years. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Ange, and we have a blended family of five at our house. I have three children of my own, all of them graduated from Barnegat High School, and I have two stepsons currently in the high school and in Brackman. I'm a New Jersey certified K-6 elementary teacher, and I worked six years in the county program teaching students who try to earn their G-day. I was elected four separate times to the Barnegat Board of Education and served five years as the Board President. During my five years in leadership, we had numerous accomplishments, such as, we brought armed guards into the school, we added a new football field, new concession stand, we added dozens of new programs, thousands of new Chromebooks, improved our test scores and our graduation rate while never raising taxes. Our ticket is running under the name "Education Above Politics," because we believe more and more political agendas and party ideology are infiltrating our school boards and districts, when it should simply be about providing the highest level of education possible for our kids, period.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Mr. Dave Sherman, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dave Sherman. I have been a resident of Barnegat for the past 18 years. I've worked for 40 years as a carpenter in the New York City District Council and also as a shop steward. During the time, I served our country proudly in the United States Army where I was awarded the Army Accommodation Medal. I was previously elected three times to the Board of Education. During that time, I served as Chairperson of the Building and Grounds Committee, worked closely with the administration to find the solutions to our football field flooding issues, and made the recommendation to the full board to install the new turf field we currently have. I left the board before my term expired because of personal reasons my family was dealing with. I believe the board should have individual servants who could devote the time needed to make informed decisions now. I am ready to make the same commitment to the board again and devote the time and energy I know is needed to be contributing board member. Many individuals have asked me, "Why are you running for the seat on the board?" I tell them, "Believe volunteering in your community is something everyone should do and is one of the most gratifying and self-fulfilling experiences an individual can have." Also knowing that I have a small part in tomorrow, giving a great sense of pride and...
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Our last candidate to speak will be Ms. Lauren Washburn.
Hi, everyone. Hello, Barnegat. My name is Lauren Washburn, and I'm running for a one-year position for the Barnegat Board of Education. If elected, I commit to do my best to bring change and progress to our schools for our children. I invested in the success of our schools in many ways. My husband of 10 years, Drew, works in the Building and Grounds Department for Barnegat. My four-year-old is a second-year student at Dunphy. I've worked in post-secondary education as a Director of Admissions for the past 13 years and have a bachelor's degree from Montclair State University. I've spent the better part of the last decade as a manager of both small and large teams. I know that much of the success of a team comes from employee satisfaction and employee retention. In Barnegat, our students are suffering because of teacher and staff retention. We need to fix this in Barnegat. We are spending more than ever, and the extra spending isn't going to save our educators. I am running for the Board of Education solely to work for the change that our district so desperately needs. We need to get our spending under control and appropriate it to the places where we should be spending.
Thank you, Ms. Sarno. Okay, I am going, as I mentioned earlier, I am going to be asking each of you separate questions, but I'm going to integrate them with general questions. With the exception, the first question I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Hickey and Mr. O'Brien. It's not necessary for you to answer, and you'll see why, but I do, I would like the balance of you to please answer. The other questions, it's up to your own discretion, unless I call on you by specific name, just raise your hand and I'll call you. Here's the reason that Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Hickey don't have to answer. For those of you not on the board presently, and by the way, you have one minute to answer these questions. I forgot to tell that to my timers over there. For those of you not on the board presently, how have you been keeping up with the district and participating in furthering its goals? Mr. Beck.
I'll start with that. As last year, I was on this Citizens Advisory Committee, which is a conglomerate of parents, of people from the 55 and above community, and staff and administration. We were able to talk about topics that were very pertinent to us as parents and as citizens of Barnegat, were able to hold the administration accountable, and were able to make positive changes. I was also, as a Chair of the committee, I was at each and every Board of Education meeting, so I, you know, I was sometimes there more than some of the board members were there. And it was, it was a great opportunity to get involved and to be around the district, to be around the people, and actually hear the concerns of the community, bring those concerns to the administration in the current board, and make those positive changes.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Who would like to go next? Ms. Washburn.
I've kept active in the community and with the Board of Education. I attended all three strategic planning meetings, was very involved in that process. I've also attended several board meetings and other meetings related to the curriculum as well. Pass that, I'm also very involved in my daughter's school as well, involved in the PTA. My daughter would tell you, mommy never misses a party. I'm always involved in anything that they have going on at Dunphy. So I like to stay active in any activities going on around the town and in her school as well.
Thank you, Ms. Washburn. Anybody else? Who's going next? Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. Again, over the last few years that I have been serving on the board, like three years now, I've kept up to date on the Board of Education by, especially during COVID, some of the meetings that they had online, I was able to attend and monitor online. Every month, I go through the month prior, the agenda, the minutes that are posted online to see what's happening there. I've had, over the last three years, had a lot of change in my life, so that's kind of why I did step back until last year, so really haven't been at meetings and active with a lot of things going on. I still have many friends that work in the district that are with it, teachers, administrators, grounds, that, again, constantly getting feedback from them, what is happening, what's working, what's not working, what the issues are. So again, a lot of feedback from a lot of people is really where I've been getting a lot of information.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Mr. Enyard.
Actually, I haven't been involved with the school board or the educational system since we've lived here. I sold my company five years ago, in 2016, and as I began to get involved in the community, I began to look at things, I'd look at things, I'd research them, to see where I can fit and make a difference. And that's one of the reasons I've decided, I think, my unique talents that I have, my background, fit perfectly to go into a Board of Education with a fresh view. You need a fresh view from time to time. You don't always need someone who's, you know, been on the board previously to run again, and so I think that that helps us, and that's what I bring.
Thank you, Mr. Enyard. We have a couple people that have answered. Ms. Angus.
So I've been involved in the district, as I previously stated, as the Vice President of the current elementary PTA, which serves our pre-K through 4th grade. It's basically a running joke in my household that I spend more time at schools than I do home. So I get involved with your Board of Education meetings, whether it's watching online or physically being present. I do have a football player of a son, so a lot of times that's sitting at the football fields watching. I attended all the parent information meetings, I do review any minutes, and I do spend quite a bit of time just talking to these teachers on a level that I don't think many parents get the opportunity to, so we feel like that feedback will be really helpful coming onto the Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Angus. We have two left. Mr. Sherman or Ms. Genie, which one of you is going to go first? Ms. Genie?
Well, I, yeah, okay. I really never paid much attention to the school system, but I am very active in my community, and, you know, I do participate in pretty much everything that I think I can handle.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sherman.
I served almost seven years on the board before, and I put a lot of time in and I took a break. My family had a lot of problems, and I had a couple of things I couldn't, had to take care of, and I've been away, and now I'm committed to come back and do the best I can again.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Okay, this is a perfect opportunity to go into one of the questions that I had an individual question for. Ms. Angus, that's going to be you. Let me find your question. Here it is. You've mentioned that you attended Barnegat schools and come with a strong PTA background and other volunteer experience. How would you respond to a parent who comes to you and says, "Hey, now that you're a board member, I don't like what's happening with my kid. How do you plan to fix this issue and advocate for a..." How do you plan to fix this issue and advocate for a constituent?
So as a board member, I know that number one, you can't change something unless it's on the agenda. We don't vote on things that are not put to us by the superintendent. So I would direct that parent to use their chain of command, starting with the teacher, the building principal, superintendent, and end with your Board of Education. I can direct people to where on the websites and information where our resources are and who in the district are the resources that they can go to to fix whatever issues they have.
Thank you, Ms. Angus. Let me go to, my next question is going to be a group question. How should the school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden? What are your thoughts on the district's current budget? Are there areas you would consider cutting and how would you determine priorities? It's an open question to all of you. Anybody need me to repeat it? I'll repeat it.
If you could.
Okay. How should the school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden? What are your thoughts on the district's current budget? Are there areas you would consider cutting and how would you determine priorities? Ms. Washburn?
First, why not? I think over the last year, two years or so, we've added quite a few administrative positions, which has increased the budget by quite a bit. We can see how much spending is going into that one particular area and we were able to get by without these positions before. So I'm questioning the need for all of the positions that have been added and take a look at and see how that would contribute to bringing the budget into a more manageable place for the taxpayers.
Could you just clarify which positions you feel were added so that, you know, voters know about positions you think were added?
Well, I know that there have been quite a few positions added in the way of vice principals and things like that in each of the schools. I think some of that came along with their reconfiguration. And you want to take a look and see what is needed, where it's needed, and make sure the spending is going to where it needs to be. We're losing teachers. I saw somebody post online that their student is on their third history teacher for the year. Going through three history teachers in one year is unacceptable.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Washburn. Who else would like to address that question? Mr. Sarno?
I think, again, over the last few years, as far as the budget, you can see obviously the budget's gone up. Everyone sees that. My focus, and my focus was always my ten years I spent on the Board of Education, the, anytime the budget was increased, it was always, where does it directly impact our students? How does it benefit them? That should be question number one, any board member should ask when that happens. If it doesn't directly impact our students, then why do we need it? And I think like Ms. Washburn just said, we brought in three new vice principals we've never had in the district before. Director of Special Operations, Director of Student Services, two district supervisors in Special Education. We have a Facilities Assistant, a Grounds Assistant. I'm just going through some of the instructional coaches, the master teachers, the administrative assistants, the additional secretaries in just about every office. None of those impact our children directly.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Anyone else wish to address this question? Mr. O'Brien?
So I think the misinformation that's presented about the number of administrators that have been hired is not really appropriate for telling the public. I think some of the campaign literature said there's twenty-four new administrators and there's twenty-four administrators total in this district. So I don't know if we got by with zero before. And I mean, at six hundred thousand dollars, it's twenty-five thousand dollars each, we've been doing a good job. You know, it's, it's political nonsense to say that we are adding master teachers and data coaches and that is a result of reconfiguration, right? So reconfiguration is a result of board leadership, which led to us having to reconfigure.
Excuse me, you will be asked to leave if you make remarks from the audience. Thank you very much.
So if we are stuck dealing.
It did not go up. A yellow card went up.
Do I get to start over again? Are you wasting everybody's time?
Excuse me, would you like to leave now? There's an officer here. I'd be happy to ask you to leave. Sorry. Don't talk. This is their time, not yours. Don't worry, there's a question for you.
So we have had to add special education supervisors because we had an increase in our special ed population. We have not decreased our special ed teachers, as been stated before. We have increased our opportunities for students. You know, it's, it's a false, it's a false statement to say that money is not being directed to students. I would say completely.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Hickey?
Okay, yeah, so we talked about the twenty-four only administrators. There's seven hundred and sixty other employees besides those administrators in the district and that leads to an over to thirty-one ratio of administrators to employees. That type of management, right, upper level management, has to supervise these people from a strategic standpoint. So is it not worth it to pay our administrators to rein in and bring quality educators to the front line? I think it is. I think the quickest way to put teachers in a position to succeed is by increasing their overall capacity and abilities. That explains the master teachers, the instructional coaches, a lot of the support positions that are required to give these teachers the time and the ability to grow their skills and become better instructors. Ninety-one new special education families moved to this town last year. Ninety-one. Words out, Barnegat's doing a great job. It's getting all over. Our special education programs are some of the best in the state. Ninety-one families moved here last year because they're all talking.
Thank you. Our next question is going to actually go to Mr. Sarno because it's appropriate with what you just brought up. Let me find the question. Mr. Sarno, while you were not the Board President when reconfiguration was voted on, the minutes at the end of your term, your last term, indicate that you were for it. You now are strongly advocating for a return to elementary schools as they previously existed. Among the benefits of reconfiguration has been the opportunity to free up staff for other roles in the district. Something I researched, including instructional coaches, a second gifted and talented teacher, expanded electives in the visual and performing arts, elementary world language, and this shield program. First part of this question is, can you justify losing all of these programs to return to a traditional school model? The second part of the question is one that you'll be familiar with as a former school board president. What happens if a board of, if you as a Board of Education member, president, member, advocate for a return to traditional schools? And the superintendent disagrees with you and does not recommend it to the Board of Education to put on the agenda?
Okay, all right, so three steps, three different questions. So your first question about the reconfiguration during my last meeting, again, I was, I was all for advancing the information that we were looking into on reconfiguration when we started it. I, when I was president during my last few months, I talked with the superintendent and we stopped the reconfiguration. We stopped it total in the tracks. We did not go forward with it. The board was still seeking more information because board members still had wanting information on it. So that, that was left up to that. So as far as the programs go, I know you mentioned a bunch of programs and what would happen with them. Nobody says we have to lose those programs. Nobody's saying cut programs, cut staff. The third part of your question was about superintendent. Again, it's, you are here to represent the parents in town, the people in town that put you in that place. And the majority of the parents in town feel that reconfiguration is not working, it is not producing what it's supposed to be. We lost twenty-eight teachers because of the reconfiguration.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sarno, but there is one really big question. I do agree with you and I am personally going to extend this because I think it's a point of order that every one of you up here needs to know. And maybe some of the others who have experience with the board want to chime in with this, but can you put it on the agenda or does the superintendent need to put it on the?
Superintendent has to put it on the.
Okay, that's all I needed to clarify.
Then again, the president has to approve the agenda.
Okay, but the superintendent has to bring it up. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Superintendent makes recommendations, the board president makes the agenda.
Okay, that's all I wanted to verify because not everybody knows that truthfully. I didn't know that four years ago either. All right, Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to go to you. Can you give me some insight as to the origination of the district's morale and culture survey? And I'd also like to know the reason you haven't released the results that have been shared on social media and what are the board's intentions as far as addressing the negative inferences?
Sure. So the, the root of the culture survey came from my experience in my professional life where the company I worked for was turned around based on the results of the survey and the responses. So the school district paid to have a survey conducted with all staff, the staff to identify the issues which we knew were out there, but this gave us a targeted action list of items. We did discuss it publicly, I think it was the June fourteenth meeting where I discussed the results publicly. We didn't go into great detail because a lot of it is personnel issues. But as a matter of fact regarding those things, remediation of the problems with morale is in the Board of, Board of Education's, I'm sorry, it's, it's in our, our goals and objectives for the Board of Education, it's in Dr. Latvis's goals, and it is also in the strategic plan. So we are actually moving the needle on trying to solve the district's problems, not just trying to wave a flag, that doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. You know, you're all welcome to comment on, on this. Although I have a follow-up question, it's a general question. So maybe why not listen to the general question and then you can comment on this as well because they're related. Teacher and staffing changes are a pervasive question, a problem throughout the country, not unique to Barnegat. Given the limited resources, what are two or three suggestions you have for the recruitment and retention of staff? Like I said, you can respond to what Mr. O'Brien said and combine your answer either way. Mr. Sarno?
I was just going to say, is he going to get a chance to answer again?
No.
Second question?
He's going to be, the second question, yes.
Then I should get two chances to answer, two, two minutes.
You can have it.
Okay, two minutes.
Mr. Sarno, you're more than welcome to have two chances.
I appreciate it. So again, that study was conducted in February of two thousand twenty-two, or at least that's when it was presented to the board in February two thousand twenty-two. And, I mean, I have the results right here. And the results again were, I mean, alarming. And I know Mr. O'Brien had said that when he, when, I guess when he took over and Mr. Hickey took over, morale in the district was so terrible. I'm not sure if that's the truth because it was that terrible three years ago when Mr. Hickey was president, it's still terrible three years later. So I don't know what's been done to change it. Since you've known for three years that the morale has been horrible, nothing's been done. I could tell you, we never had morale issues when I was president. We started the Inspires Program, which, the Hall of Fame Program. We work with the union constantly on, on working with the staff. Again, to make sure the staff is respected, the staff feels they're appreciated, the staff feels, and again, in this, in this year, it says that they feel that there's conflict constantly.
Mr. Sarno, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to thank you for pointing out that we did a survey to identify the problems. Because it wasn't a light switch. You didn't leave and suddenly everybody's like, oh, this, this is the worst, right? Like, it took all of your years in service to get us where we are. And so we identified the issues, we are working to fight those issues and correct them. We're not, we're not saying we're doing great, right? We are fixing, we are actually fixing the issues. We're not wasting time saying, everybody's terrible, everybody's terrible.
What have you done since this report?
I, I've already explained it. We, we put it on the superintendent's objectives. This year is he's going to be graded on his performance for remitting these issues. It's a board objective. It's in our five-year strategic plan. What more can our district do?
Thank you. Mr. Sarno, I know you asked me about replying. Do you want to reply or do you want to let Mr. Hickey speak first? Mr. Hickey, please.
Yeah, so culture and climate isn't unique to Barnegat district. It's a nationwide issue that's going on post-pandemic. It really is. Every organization, military, government, private industry, everyone is dealing with it. In our district, we're acting on it. This is us diagnosing the problem. This is finding a way forward. This is us prioritizing it with our five-year strategic plan. Culture and climate is hugely alarming. The retention is hugely alarming because you can't educate kids unless you have continuity and you have good people. But not all turnover is bad turnover. When you start holding people accountable for poor performance, the Danielson rubric was followed. When you were the president, there was only seven items checked, seven out of forty-eight. And only now, is it now, that we're looking at teachers and saying, you got to do a better job. And if you want to be a part of Barnegat, you've got to be great. That's where we're at right now. We're adding accountability, we're adding further stuff. We're putting, we're putting everybody in a power to be empowered and trained and we're giving them the supports to get there. But we're not just sitting back and let it.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Is there someone else that wants to say something on this issue? Dr. Beck, this is the perfect time for your question. After reading your candidate's statement, I had the impression you feel that academics is important, but also seem to recognize the significance of social, emotional learning. How do you see this as an issue in Barnegat schools and what can the board do to provide students with resources?
Thank you. Yes, obviously academics is a huge part. Every student, whether they just want to go to college or go into the workforce or go anywhere, they need to have the proper education to make themselves, to better themselves and let themselves be ready for the workforce and work field. Social, emotional education and learning, I don't think is unique to Barnegat either. This is a problem that we've had post-COVID pandemic. I believe that students are placed with more challenges now, anxiety, just being in a social environment. We need to provide the students and the staff with the resources to get them through all this. We need to have the staff be able to discipline properly. And saying bullying and the HIB infractions and all that will not be tolerated here in the district. And, but we need to be able to support the students through counseling, through education, through social groups, through.
Thank you, Dr. Beck. Is anybody else care to comment on that? Okay. You did bring up bullying and that leads me to another question. That's a question for the entire group of candidates up here. What steps beyond the existing policies should the school district take to protect students from bullying, from harassment? And is there a reason we're seeing an uptake, an uptick in bullying incidents this year? Would like to comment on that?
I'll start. Yeah, so there's been some.
Mr. Hickey. I want to say out loud who you are so that people know who's speaking. Mr. Hickey.
So there's been some literature out there that kind of indicates that HIBs are on the rise. Well, that's because we didn't have any in school in two thousand twenty, or twenty twenty. Essentially, there was no HIB cases and then it rebounded back to the same numbers that it was prior to COVID. But our population keeps growing. As your population keeps growing, the number stays the same. So the rate of HIBs is actually declining, decreasing. And anyone that can say different, I'd love to see your math because it's not true. What we need to do is continue with the social and emotional support. There's a student mentorship program that's coming into play. And there's a lot of different things that are being rolled out by the administration now to continue to make the children feel included and to kind of break down those barriers of HIBs or bullying and other types of violent crimes.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anyone else care to comment? Mr. Sarno?
Yes, thank you. Just to add on, as far as the C-HIB goes, I put in a note request back in September and Mr. Brennan gave them to me. The last three years of HIB incidents, founded HIB incidents, HIB investigations in the district overall for three years, and broken down by each school for the last three years. Mr. Hickey's saying that the HIB cases during COVID had reduced. They hadn't reduced very much from the first year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So they hadn't reduced much. And over a three-year period, again, I looked at the three-year period, looked at each school, broke it down, founded HIB cases went up fifty-five percent. The number of HIB cases from two thousand nineteen to the last year that were investigated went up, I'm trying to remember, it was nineteen percent. So you can ask Mr. Brennan next time you see him because I've open requested it, I have him. And the data is there. I can only report what the data says. The data says it's 55%.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Okay, next question, Mr. Hickey goes to you. Barnegat offered two informational sessions on the health and physical education curriculum. At recent meetings, two board members complained about the content of what has come to be known as the sex ed curriculum. At last month's board meeting, you suggested the vote be delayed. You've been accused of political motivations to hold off on the vote until after the election. Please update us on the current status of passing the proposed curriculum. Also, tell me how the district is handling an opt-in, opt-out policy? And if you know, the percentage of children opt-ed out before the curriculum has even been finalized?
Yeah, so to kind of just refute the actuality of it being a political hack job. Essentially, what was happening there is we had several board members, three of them to be exact, that saw the vagueness or weren't clear on what was happening. I've always been an advocate for the minority voice on the board. Through the entire time I was the board president, I would take the time. I spent hours upon hours on the phone with people that disagreed with me and very little time on the people that agreed with me. And why do I do that? It's because everybody that's an elected official has a voice. So we just asked for more time so we can make sure we're doing the right things. We're gonna vote on it in October. The action plan is to send it out, the curriculum to everybody, get a quick meeting with all the parents, discussion lives, and then make any adjustments. The opt-in, opt-out, and when you log onto Parent Portal for the beginning of the year, you had to pick yes or no. There is no other way to get into Parent Portal without doing it. And right now, the percentage is 11% of parents opted out from the health P curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else care to speak on this particular part of the curriculum? Please don't talk. If you need to talk, please leave the room. I'm really tired of telling you that. Let's be grownups. Thank you. Anybody else care to speak on that part? Dr. Beck?
Obviously, this is a very touchy subject. And as a parent of a first grader and a fourth grader, I, I don't love it. I don't like it at all. I think it should be taught in the homes. I thought it should be, I think it should be taught by the parents. I also know that with mandates and what the state can hold over you and do to you, there has to be some sort of compromise. And compromise is what our world needs right now. Everybody's way over here or way over here, but in reality, I think most people are somewhere here in the middle. And when you come together and speak logically, level-headed, you can come to that conclusion. The district, from my understanding, has been loud and clear about how they're going to implement this. They're offering parents to be a big part of this and they're offering the opt-out program. If there has to be a compromise, that's not a bad compromise in my thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Beck. I'm sorry. Anybody else? Mr. Sherman?
Sex education and all that stuff should be taught at home. I believe that's 100%. And I don't know why the current board right now is not voting on it until after the election.
Mr. Sherman, I'm gonna just ask the current board president, are you holding the election, the vote on this central after the election?
No, I think Mr. Hickey just explained that pretty clearly, that we are having another parent information session and we'll be voting on the curriculum in October.
Thank you. So will be voted on before the election? So anybody who's voting by mail, if they want to hold it off, they know they can hold off. Does anybody else want to say something? Ms. Washburn?
I just think that it would be nice for the parents that would like to attend to have the same services available to them that we have for strategic planning. I know that the childcare was provided there. There are parents, myself included. My husband works nights a lot of times. I don't always have somebody to watch my daughter when I have to go to important meetings. So it would be nice to have that same service available to parents going to those meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Washburn. Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. Just a couple of things on that. I know last night I went to the meeting and Mr. Hickey said they will probably vote on it in October, depending on how the board members are, what the community says. So that was your statement last night, probably. But unless something changes, unless we have to really work on the curriculum, it may be October, it might not. But you said maybe, probably. And last night, Mr. O'Brien had stated that the board intends to follow the state mandates because we have to, because otherwise we would fail CUSAC, that was your statement last night. And as you realize, again, pulling up CUSAC, CUSAC as far as the education part, physical education part and health part, is four points of the 100 you could possibly get for that section of education and you need 80 to pass. So I would be willing to give up those four points and allow my kids be taught at home and the kids of this district to be taught at home by their parents, just like Stafford did. And if the state wants to have an issue with it, that's something you deal with down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Go ahead, because I do have a related question, but go ahead.
I do recognize that you're okay with not failing or not passing CUSAC because we never did while you were in charge. So we did pass CUSAC for the first time within 81, so that loss of points would reduce us back to not passing. Which again, I know you're fine with.
Mr. O'Brien, could you please describe for everybody what CUSAC is because most people don't know?
CUSAC is a state audit. They come in and they check that your curriculum and finances and other topics meet state standards, etc.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was open to, more on CUSAC. I'm sorry, since you gave him another opportunity to speak.
I'm happy to give you another opportunity. Go ahead, Mr. Sarno.
Always excellent. Thank you, Stephanie. CUSAC, again, the last few years, CUSAC with us, there's 15 points you get for passing the state graduation rate over a four-year period. Over the last three years, our graduation rate has not met the state standard. So we've lost 15 points in that area because our graduation rate is below the state standard. So if we would have the graduation rate, we wouldn't need the four points for the health sex ed. Those 15 points have been lost because you can't meet, you haven't met the graduation rate in the last three years.
Mr. Sarno, as long as you bring that up during your tenure as school board president, and this is really not on the board in my opinion, it's more the administration.
You're interjecting.
But during, during your tenure?
I thought you said you weren't interjecting yourself in that.
Oh well, I just have a question. During, during your tenure, did you, was CUSAC passed during your tenure as president?
No, as I explained to you before the meeting started, when Mrs. Wood was superintendent here for seven years, she did her own curriculum for every, for every health, history, science, math, her and Anthony, Anthony's last name, who was head of curriculum at the time. That was one of the reasons Mrs. Wood was not brought back when her contract expired.
Okay, because I'm just asking for a point of clarification. I don't want to go through this anymore because I have a question for Ms. Jeannie.
I don't think it's fair to move on completely yet because Mr. Sarno was.
You're gonna, you're gonna have it at the end. You'll be able to talk. Ms. Jeannie, according to a flyer paid for by your campaign, you plan to design a sex education curriculum that allows parents to teach these subjects to their children at home. You say it shouldn't be up to the politicians in Trenton. What are your qualifications or what steps do you plan to take to develop this curriculum and get it on the board agenda? Because again, it's the superintendent that gets it on the agenda. And also, again, what are the consequences of failing to follow the directions from the state?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I'm happy to show you. I brought it with me. Says right here, paid for by you. Your name is on it.
Where does it say that we plan on it?
It says, it says it's all of your plans, but the reason I'm asking Ms. Jeannie is part of it.
Again, Stephanie, where does it say we plan?
I am quoting right from here.
But I'm asking you, can you read it?
I am not talking to you, Mr. Sarno. I'm asking Ms. Jeannie, who obviously is unaware that this was part of her campaign.
It says, "We will implement it."
It says, "Sex education curriculum, design a curriculum," I quoted directly from it, "that allows parents to teach these subjects to their children at home. Parents should be educated, educating their children on these matters when they feel it is appropriate, not politicians in..."
Again, it would be we.
Again, the member of the audience that keeps on speaking, I'd be happy to ask you to leave. This is your final warning. Thank you. Mr. Sarno, I realize you don't like that, maybe you wrote this, I don't know who wrote this, but the reason I picked Ms. Jeannie is because it's her name that says paid for. And I apologize, Ms. Jeannie, if that's it, but I don't understand how this will wind up on the agenda if the superintendent is not designing the curriculum.
That's our stance on it.
Okay.
As far as we would.
I did not ask you, Mr. Sarno. I asked Ms. Jeannie. I asked Ms. Jeannie, please do not speak. Thank you.
Be accurate in what you're reading.
I am being accurate. I have your flyer, it came to my house. Nobody gave it to me. It came to my house. See, it says right here, postal customer. Okay? All right. Anybody else care to speak on this? Not Mr. O'Brien. Anyone else care to speak on this? Okay. Let's go on to another controversial subject. Ms. Washburn, your turn. Okay. You know, we talk about the sex ed curriculum. That's not the only thing that's been a big deal in the last couple of years. We all remember our mayor speaking about another part of the curriculum that COVID kind of didn't implement for a while. So separate from this curriculum, the state has also required to incorporate references to disabled individuals or members of the LGBTQ community that have made significant contributions. This is something that can't be opted out of, like the other things. One common person used to justify this addition is Alan Turing, who saved many lives by breaking Nazi codes. Turing was subsequently chemically castrated for having sex with a man and ultimately committed suicide. Proponents of this curriculum say telling Turing's story gives students insight about how society has changed while others can identify with him. What are your feelings?
I think we need to talk about these things. I think we need to talk about these things and make sure that we are relaying the information to our students in a way that they can understand. I think that's the most important thing because if we're talking about this and not being specific, I think it has the possibility of being misunderstood by our students and I think that's the most dangerous thing. So I think we need to make sure that the curriculum, the way that we're delivering it, they do understand what we're talking about and the serious nature of what we're talking about.
So the example I gave you would be okay with?
Again, I think we need to look at it. I don't know the specific case. I don't know the specific information. But I think anything relating to such topics, we need to make sure that our students are understanding what we are delivering to them.
Okay, that's reasonable. Anybody else? Nobody else wants to speak on it? Well, you're all for it right now. Don't worry, I have more controversial questions and not ones that I came up with. Mr. Enyard, your turn. Let me find it. Whoops, it's here. We've received questions about critical race theory, which some suggest is a part of a woke mentality. As it now stands in New Jersey, CRT currently only exists in graduate-level education and not in public school districts. The concept appears to be focused on diversity and inclusion, with some calling CRT discriminatory against white students whose parents fear their children will be labeled as oppressors. What do you see as relevant to the position you are seeking on Barnegat's Board of Education?
Well, first of all, the board doesn't write the entire curriculum. So the issue of critical race theory or woke, those are flashwords. They become political battlegrounds. One person will listen to those and they will say, it tells the truth about the way the United States has been, the way the United States has treated its citizens, whether it was the Japanese internment or other things. Another person would say, no, you're denigrating America. And I think what we first have to do is get away from the flashpoint. And we have to look at the way history is taught. We have to look at the way history is and make sure that it's honest. So do it in a way that makes sense and that's honest. And the same thing with the woke agenda. It's, it's not a question of being a far-right or a far-left. It shouldn't be either of those. There shouldn't be book bannings in libraries.
Thank you, Mr. Enyard. I'm sorry. Anybody else? Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, so as far as CRT and the woke mentality, they're not state standards, right? So what's pertinent to the board isn't necessarily that. The race, diversity, the inclusion, all that stuff. In our country's past, we've had some bad things. But more importantly, I've got to see upfront, close to personal, people that killed each other over religion. She is in Sunnis. I watched a woman on video get stoned to death in Kabul because she was a female pilot. What's important to do is to acknowledge that countries and governments don't always treat people the right way. There is ethnic cleansing going on in the world right now, Uighurs in China. We got to make sure that never happens again. So however our curriculum ends up, we got to acknowledge it. We got to look back at our past and we got to make sure our kids know that history cannot repeat itself when it comes to those types of issues.
Thank you. Dr. Beck?
I just want to add real quick that we need to create a culture here in town that it doesn't matter what race, religion, male, female, what sexual orientation you are or identify as now. It doesn't matter. Be a good person, do well in school, be a contributing member to society, break the cycle. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in the curriculum. It's the CRT, you're not teaching it in public schools. It's a non-issue. We're making it an issue. It doesn't have to be an issue. Be a good person. Have everybody have the right opportunities that equal same opportunities. Why is it a big deal?
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on that? Okay, here's a good one. If the board passes a policy you disagree with, this is a general question to everybody. If the board passes a policy you disagree with, what do you feel your obligation is to support it? Some examples, reconfiguration, COVID response we had here during those two years, masking, curriculum changes. So we're, you know, throwing it out there. Let's say the sex ed curriculum passes as it is now. What's your responsibility as a board member? Mr. Sherman?
On the first day you come on the board, they tell you that we have a certain procedure we have to follow. And when it comes to a vote, the five to four vote, the winning vote, it gets the, whatever they're voting on and you just have to go along with it. You cannot try to make waves on that.
So you're saying, Mr. Sherman, that's how you always were and that's how you will continue if you're a board?
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Enyard, I guess it's Dr. Enyard I'm thinking.
An example of that is that if you disagree with a proposal on the board and it then passes, it's your obligation to help make that work the best it can possibly work. An example is John O'Brien. He was against the reconfiguration, adamant against it when he ran for the board. But the board passed the reconfiguration and since then, he's done his best in order to make it work and work well.
Thank you, Mr. Enyard. Anyone else wish to speak on that?
Yeah, I do. So we take an oath when we take office here?
I want to identify you because I'm not sure everybody can tell who's speaking. Mr. Hickey?
Thank you. So we take an oath when we take office here. And those oaths are serious. And what we kind of take an oath to is that we're gonna follow our code of ethics on top of all the other stuff. And that code of ethics in there says that the board cannot, individual board members can't act alone. How we exercise our influence is through our chairs, on our committees, and how we interface and build trust and build relationships with our administrative liaisons with the district. If you have a good idea, that's where you bring it up. And if your idea falls short of the mark and it doesn't get voted, at that point, you have to follow orders. And you need to support that issue and see it through to the very end. So I agree with what Mr. Sherman said completely and what Dr. Enyard. So I agree with what Mr. Sherman said completely, and what Dr. Enyard said, and that's the way it's got to be.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Mr. Sarno, also your hand raised.
Again, you could see the people that have served on the board kind of have the same philosophy. There's been many a times in the years I've served on the board where things that I didn't support went through, there was always different ways people handled it, I've had board members that, as a parent, when you're a parent, you can say whatever you want. We had board members that got off from the dais, went to public sessions as a parent and came out and spoke against whatever the issue was they didn't agree with. So that's a way that people can let their feelings be known. Not everybody feels that they're going to put their full oomph into something they don't fully believe, but I always, again, I've had many things that I didn't support or didn't vote yes on, but at the end of the day, majority rules on mostly anything that we deal with in this country and town, and you have to respect the majority's opinion. And, you know, you took an oath to try to do the best you can, the children of this district, and that means, you know, you move forward with the process, even though you probably didn't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. You're right, it looks like everybody who's been on the board had the same sentiment. Mr. O'Brien?
Yep, and I think it is a similar sentiment. When I ran for election, as Dr. Enyard indicated, I fought valiantly against reconfiguration. I fought against it until the night of the vote, even delaying the vote in time. But once it won, it was important for me to make it work, right? We still have students in the district, to not make it work would be unacceptable. So I wasn't going to take my ball and go home, I worked hard to try and make it better, and we are continuing to try and make it better and better ever, and it's showing results.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Sherman, I have not given you your individual question, and you kind of alluded to it, but then I went back and looked at notes, you know, when you left the board, you and I spoke, and what you said to me when you left the board, because I looked at my notes, is, hold on one second, let me find your question. You said to me, when you resigned, it was next June that you resigned, I kind of envied what you said, you said, "I want to enjoy more of my life in my retirement, I want to play golf, cards, and have fun fishing." Now you're saying, I can understand if you didn't want to share that that.
I really didn't want you to know my reasoning for leaving at that time.
Okay, and everything's okay?
Was that the answer?
Yeah, I do, but I'm asking you, are you okay now to serve another three years?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, yes, that's why I'm asking, because again, you know, we're flawed.
I understand.
I was told that you left for a different reason entirely, and that's why I wanted to check.
I didn't want to take the tissues out at the time.
Okay, listen, hey.
Everything is good now, everything.
I'm glad, all right, but I had the question for parents, I had to ask. Okay, let's see what else I have left here. I hate this, this particular question bothers me, because it's America. School shootings and other types of violence throughout the country continue to frighten families, all of us, I mean, it's without a doubt. What productive measures can the Barnegat Board of Education take as far as additional security? Do we need additional security? And should we increase the budget to do so, or forego some other, and forego some other program? Or forego, that should be more, or forego? Anybody? Dr. Enyard?
Obviously, that's of a minimum importance, because if you can't feel safe in your school, if you aren't safe in your school, then there won't be the education. What you need to do, and what I believe is done, my understanding is, is that currently there are armed guards in, or armed staff in the schools, I do believe that they've looked at this, I think bringing in the things that Scott Peck was talking about, with the social awareness and bringing those discussions, alerting people that they see something that or hear something that isn't, I think the knowledge of the school district and the place and the importance has risen from what I've seen over the past few years, and I think they are addressing it, that doesn't mean, it shouldn't be continually looked at, and to see if it needs revision or change, and I think it should be a priority, a priority in the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Enyard. Mr. Hickey? Oh, yes.
Okay. Yes ma'am, so there's a bunch of tactical and technical things that we put in place, and I'm not going to speak to the merits of those because I agree with them all, but what's the biggest thing that we can do for security is there is a huge mental health crisis in this country right now, there's a huge values crisis in this country right now. People see their lives and others' throwaway items, and until we address those underlying issues, there's going to be problems with violence on several different aspects. So we, as a district, we can address that locally through all the tactical and technical measures we put in place, but more importantly, it's by getting down to the root of the social emotional learning, getting down to the root of identifying why people feel like violence is the answer right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Mr. O'Brien?
Sure, I'd like to comment on some of the things that the board has actually done to prevent these issues, aside from the social emotional things, the specific items, we've added bus cameras, GPS systems to every bus in the district, we've improved communication so everybody has walkie-talkies that work throughout the district, we've improved building security technologies with updated cameras that are in 10K, as some students have did, we have door access panic buttons, so a school incident in one building will shut down the entire district, we have an emergency alert system integrated with the Barnegat Police Department, so the Barnegat Police Department response time is second, and we are continually looking at investments and improvements in our security to keep our district safe. Just last week, there was a fight up at the football game, and immediately changes were made on how students and families will access the events. Security is taken very, very seriously, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Dr. Beck?
Just one comment on that, because I think everybody's making very valid and good points in security, and safety and security of our students and our staff is of utmost importance, but discipline in-house is important too. I think the students have to be held accountable, and there are many steps to get to where the students are actually held accountable, I think that needs to be revised, there are too many steps. Yes, we need to support our students, we need to give them every resource possible, but it gets to a point where discipline, whether it be suspension, expulsion, whatever it is, there are students that will probably need that, and that should be, in my opinion, looked at more, and students should be held accountable.
Thank you, Dr. Beck. Ms. Washburn?
Ladies first.
I probably am not alone on this stage when I say that I would spend any amount of money necessary to keep my daughter safe, I think we probably all have that sentiment, to keep our children safe, I think that's probably the most important thing that we do day in, day out, as parents, as educators, as members of society. I think that it would be really good to put in place some kind of monthly audit on security features and make sure that we're staying up to date with everything we need to on all occasions. So if we're doing some kind of outside event, do we have the proper coverage there to make sure that that is safe? Are we safe inside? To make sure that the students feel safe is also really important, so surveying the students to make sure that they're feeling safe, and where they're feeling unsafe, to take that information and compile it, I think would be really important.
Thank you so much, Ms. Washburn. Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. Just a couple of things too, again, obviously, Board of Education and the staff and everybody's here to educate our children, that again is without saying, but more important than that, I think everyone here said that, and Ms. Washburn has stated it, security. Our children should be able to come to a school and feel safe in the environment they're learning in, and have no concerns, our staff should feel the same as well. Over the years that I was on the board, we established the armed guards in the district, we never had armed security guards in the district before, till 2018, I was the president, on air, and that's when it was established, 2018. Cameras were installed in 2017 in the schools and on all buses back in 2017. We spent over $330,000 on upgrades, some of them, again, have never been put out to the public on some of the upgrades we did within the district, we spent over $330,000. We also started a committee with the Barnegat Township Police Department and the response team to create security protocols for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Back in 2018.
This leads me to, you know, you just brought up something that I'd like to point out to people who may not realize that. I would like to thank you, Mr. Sarno, Mr. Hickey, and Mr. O'Brien, you have all three of you, and I guess I should thank you, Mr. Sherman, but the reason I was thanking you three is because you were, all three of you have served as presidents of the Board of Education. I don't know that everybody knows how much you get paid for this, I know that you're bringing paychecks of zero. Okay, you did bring up something I think started as part of your strategic planning during the year you were president, I believe. Am I correct?
That you're right.
The things that you just mentioned as far as the security, and at the same time, I do believe that that's the same year that you helped put you, with the rest of your board, you know, helped put a plan in place as far as technology. Okay. This year, we were able to ramp up the strategic plan, which, a normal one, five years is a normal one.
We?
The Board of Education here, Barnegat, I'm talking about. Barnegat Board of Education was able to ramp it up to three-year to five-year, but there's a particular reason that that happened. Mr. O'Brien, since you're the current president, could you please share why you were able to get one-to-one computers this year?
Yeah, it was last year, we were ready when COVID shut our schools down to give all of our students K through 12 access to technology. COVID enabled a lot of improvements in this district, because the federal government and the state government provided lots of grants and opportunities to improve our buildings and to fix a lot of the issues that we had, including actually providing one-to-one technology for all students.
So, actually, in reality, what it is, is we were budgeted, and, you know, realistically, we hoped to do it in five years, but because of federal grants, we moved forward.
It was one-to-one technology prior to.
There was not.
Yes, there was, Mr. O'Brien.
There was not.
Prior to 2019, yes, there was.
No, there was not one-to, I researched this ahead of time, but I'm not going to get into it, you guys can talk about it, but this, there are 3,000 students, and there's some, actually, I just read somebody complaining, 3,000?
3,600.
Okay, but there are staff members that are still claiming that they do not have technology, but COVID did it, actually, you know, I don't want to see people taking, you know, responsibility. Some of the infrastructure problems that we have, is there somebody that wants to address that? We have infrastructure, things like I heard, and again, you know, Board of Education and administration are separate but together entities, so I'm not putting the blame on anybody here, but from what I understand, the reason we have problems with our HVAC systems is because there was a failure of things like changing filters, if I have to let my husband to do, because I don't know how to do. Anybody want to address that? What was the problem with that? Mr. Sherman, I feel like you would know because you were on buildings and grounds forever.
Yeah, well, in the schools, everything was starting to go now, and when I was on the board, it was the HVAC and the electrical and the lighting and the ceilings, and it just keeps growing and growing, and you have to get on it, and then, I think next to my last year I was on, they hired a new man that took over, I forgot his name right now, and he was starting to, things were starting to shape up a little bit, it was getting better and better.
Okay, so you're saying it's because systems are getting old, it's nothing to do with maintenance?
So it doesn't?
You're saying it's systems are aging?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not because of maintenance?
No.
Okay, anybody else want to speak on that? Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, so I know prior to me, during prior administrations and prior business administrators, that there was a pretty much wholesale disregard to spend money on capital improvements or even infrastructure maintenance. Several of the issues, breakdowns that we had, just even in my first few years on the board, were things that engineers came in and talked to us about, of almost gross neglect. We were able to turn the capital improvement fund, Mr. Brennan is a masterful guy at figuring out how to finance and move these things along, and put in place ways to finance and improve the facilities in ways that are unimaginable. While those different ideas have come from the administration and certain boards have passed them, there's a huge amount of pride within our student body about the facilities that we have now, and through our facility plan, we're going to continue that one to go forward.
I understand, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. O'Brien?
In the past three years, we spent $3.4 million in district-wide HVAC upgrades, we've used CARES money, which is a COVID spend, capital reserve, cafeteria surplus, pre-K grant funds, we have an ESIP program, which is an energy savings improvement plan, that was almost $6 million in upgrades that are tax, zero impact to the taxpayer in Barnegat. Those leases were paid for by upgrades that were approved by the BPI, the Board of Public Utilities, BPU, sorry, and those are net neutral to the taxpayer. We have 1.9 million in upgrades to the Brackman HVAC systems, 1.2 million in high school repair, chiller repair, all of these funds were not a budget impact to the taxpayer.
Thank you. Mr. Tarkin?
Yeah, just again, touching on some of those things, as far as the upgrades and facilities, I agree kind of with what Mr. Hickey had said back several years ago when I first took over as president, and the superintendent and the business administrator we had at the time, total disregard for the well-being of the district. It was in probably one of the worst shapes in Ocean County as far as schools. Over the years, we put, again, the HVAC system in Brackman School and the chiller that we replaced my last year there, the high school chiller was on the agenda my last meeting to be replaced when I was president, so we were doing that, we'd already spent a hundred and something thousand dollars to replace some of the HVAC system here in the high school. We fixed a football field, which had a flooding issue for the last 10 years since it was built, we put the concession stand up on the football field, so again, we did plenty over the time, and I was here when we added on to the Brackman School, to the Edward School, to the Collins School, we built the high school, we built the Donahue School.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you.
Nope, it's understood.
All right, here's a question. As a Board of Education member, this is to all of you, including those of you who have not served, do you have the authority to reprimand a student, teacher, or superintendent? What steps are you able to take if any of these individuals acted inappropriately, in your opinion? Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, I'll tackle that one. So essentially, I kind of made myself a policy expert on a lot of these different ethics and public laws over the last couple of years. One of the biggest things we did was go through and revamp all the policies, was the first month, we went through and got them all out. So, I'll talk to the things. Teachers and students are off limits for board members and will result in ethics charges being filed and sustained, we've seen it in the past recently. Superintendents are a different matter, boards of educations can rise a superintendent in an executive session, reprimands can be passed to the superintendent from the Board of Education, but the most appropriate way for a Board of Education to maintain oversight of the superintendent is through daily healthy communications between the board and the superintendent, and then very good evaluations and feedback given at the end of each school year that are tied basically to the district and the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anyone else? Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. Obviously, a board member does not have the authority to reprimand a teacher, a superintendent, directly. They do have the authority to reprimand a student, their own, their child, that's about it. Not a child.
That's a good clarification.
I've reprimanded my child, children, many times, but again, as far as superintendent, Mr. Hickey's right, you can raise, previously raised superintendent probably to the board four or five times that I was here. One of the biggest ways you deal with your superintendent is the board at the end of the year does a evaluation, and you kind of mentioned that, you do an evaluation of the superintendent, each board member does it, that evaluation stays with that superintendent the rest of his career. So the superintendent does not want a bad evaluation, because if he ever tries to go to another district, or a promotion to another job or whatever, that is always there for the public to see and his new employee. the public to see and, and his new employees to see. So that, that is the best way to, to really, and communication with him.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Anybody else down there? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I mean, superintendent evaluation is one of the most critical things that the school board can do. My first year on the board, one of my first meetings, we had to do two of them because previous board president didn't take care of his duties at the time. But those are confidential and those are deep discussions with the superintendent that we'll go into the details of, of each goal and, and understand where he did well or didn't.
Anybody else? Okay, so this leads me to an important question. What is your role as a Board of Education? There are three, three answers I'm looking for. It's not a trick question, and you alluded to them. Mr. O'Brien?
As I just said, one most important is the evaluation of the superintendent and his performance.
That's one. Anybody got another one? Okay. Dr. Beck?
Driving education forward and being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Policy-making and governance and budgeting.
Okay, policy is what I was looking, there's one more. And I think, Mr. Sarno, you might be the only one here that was involved in it, actually. So that one you should get.
Oh, your, goes back many years. My memory's not as good as it used to be.
I'll share it with you. The, the third, the third one is boards of educations have three roles. Hiring the superintendent, evaluating slash hiring if necessary the superintendent.
Personnel.
And thirdly, the policy, policymaking. Those are, those are what the public is looking for you guys to do. Not everybody realizes that's what you're limited to.
Well, you're not limited to that. That's, that's not what you're limited to. You, you vote on everything that's done in the district.
But that's the policy. What you're voting on is the policy of the district.
You're voting on hiring people, you're voting on.
All part of the policy.
Spending money, you're hiring on education, the curriculum, the facilities.
But that's all part of the policy. That's a general term for the policy. Okay? I, I'm not arguing with him.
No, no, I know.
People think that, you know, if I go to the Board of Education member, I go to Dr. Beck, he's on the, on the Board of Education, and I ask him, that's why I came up with Ms. Angus's question. I go to him and I say, this teacher keeps picking on my kid. Dr. Beck's obligation is to go to the superintendent or the principal and not try to handle it himself. That's, people think you guys are involved in the day-to-day operation, and that's what I'm trying to remove that perception, not from any of you, but from the general public to realize.
I just add to that, so, I mean, honestly, and Mike and Sean, I'm sure can lay this, the president does kind of have a day-to-day, um, you know, input in what's happening because the superintendent does keep in touch with the, the board president on a constant basis on what is happening in the district and updating the rest of the board, you know, on more of a monthly meeting, but, um, that's more the, the president of the board happens to them.
Mr. Sherman?
People think that they're on the school board, that you can lower the taxes from the school.
That too.
They come up to you in the street and say, Dave, when are you going to lower the taxes? I said, uh, not, not anytime soon.
All right, this is a.
As a point of clarification, superintendent and president do communicate regularly, uh, and it is to provide updates. The president and Board of Education does not make day-to-day decisions for the district.
The superintendent, the administrator. I, I, I want to go back to something that you mentioned, and I want to bring it in with something else. Uh, I looked at some figures. You know, we're all concerned that our kids lost learning as a result of COVID. From what I understand, the state testing, while it's not the best, at least it's along the lines of what the state is now. What do you feel can be done to improve the academics in the district, to bring us to a better level? Ms. Washburn?
I think we've already talked about a couple of those things, such as teacher retention is really important, the continuity of their education, having the same teacher each year is, or throughout the year is really going to help towards those test scores. And I also think that feeling secure where they're learning is really important. So to feel safe in what they're doing, um, and, and the space that they're learning at is really going to contribute towards those test scores, I think.
Ms. Angus?
Part of what I feel from having Sarno in the district who's in fourth grade is that over the last several years, there's been a serious increase in the amount of testing that's going on. I was really pleased when I went to back-to-school night this year and found out that a lot of those tiny little quizzes and tests have actually been removed, and the teachers are getting a little bit more, uh, autonomy in order to teach in the classroom. You know, his fourth-grade teacher did say to us that he was very glad that he wasn't wasting half a day every single Friday now doing his spelling and vocab test, and instead it's been integrated into the new iReady that they've adopted for ELA.
Thank you. I think somebody else down there raised their hand. Dr. Beck?
I was just going to have, uh, this is a small point. Um, I think it starts from the ground level up and past administrations and, uh, years, you know, gone by here, it wasn't, the standards weren't there, and the standards are getting better and better and better. And it starts with the pre-K. We haven't talked about pre-K. We are offering free pre-K, um, and the, and the testing and the levels that are coming out of that are phenomenal. We're starting at a young age, we're going to bring them up through the program. You can't make changes overnight. It takes time for anything measurable to happen, um, in a, in a positive or sometimes negative manner. So we are starting from the younger ages. My girls are in first and fourth grade, and the education that they're getting here surpasses many, many other districts in Ocean County. I can tell you that from personal experience and from, from people around town, uh, around the area. So I think by starting, uh, and it's not to.
Sorry, Dr. Beck.
I was rambling.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, so I just wanted to point out one of Ms. Angus's comments about the testing and what we're doing in classrooms is a direct result of the Citizens Advisory Committee. That was feedback that came direct from the community and filtered its way through the administration out to actually make a difference. So thank you for, for that, Dr. Beck. Declines in performance, educational performance is a national, global problem coming out of the pandemic. Barnegat tied or beat New Jersey scores in five of the six primary indicators. We beat the state averages, right? So we are, we are fighting for more, we are fighting to improve, and we will continue to do so to do better than the rest of the schools.
Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, as the chairperson of the Education Committee and the entire time I've been on the board, I take a lot of pride in being involved with the school's primary, and with Sean, a very intimate level, getting to work with Mr. Barbeary, the director of curriculum on a day-to-day basis. Very appreciative for that opportunity. But the biggest thing that we can do to improve things is to increase accountability for our student behaviors that Scott talked about earlier, because a lot of that stuff is just distraction. The second thing is parental commitment to student success. Without parents getting fully involved with their students and really taking ownership of their students' performance at the, especially at the younger ages or providing encouragement, it's going to be very difficult to be, um, further, further improvements. We also have to increase the overall ability of our frontline teachers through professional development, accountability, evaluation, and other methods to make sure those people that have the daily interaction with our students are able to do it in the most up-to-date methods. And then lastly is to improve that climate and culture. So happy teachers equal happy students. They're the people that set the tone all day for our students.
Mr. Sarno?
Thank you. Um, just a few things I want to touch on. I agree with Mr. Beck on the pre-K. Pre-K started in my last year on the board, 2019. We brought it in, got a grant from the state, um, for $4.7 million to start a free pre-K for the whole town. So yes, we, we started that back then. Mr. Hickey, did you say that you've been chair of the Education Committee the whole entire time?
No, for the last two years, and I've been the Education Committee for all four years. That's not, I said.
You said the entire time?
No, I said I've been on the committee for all four.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I thought you said the entire. The, one of the main things that we get, that needs to be done, again, to move up, I guess, test scores, education quality in our district total, um, is staff morale. It all starts at the front line. The front line is our, our staff, our teachers, the people that are in the classroom with our kids on a daily basis. The staff morale is low, and even in this report that they said, they feel the product they're putting out to our students is low, is not satisfactory, in this report, survey that came out. So if they feel that they're not meeting the standards, it starts there, the front line, and that's where we have to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno.
I'm glad you approve, approve of what we're trying to do to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, I, no, I don't want to.
I'm just, I'm thanking you.
I'll make you thank you. I don't want to, I don't want to get into any debates because this is, I'm going to give you all one final thing before we do the closing. Okay. Barnegat High School, Barnegat Township School District, I said high school, I meant Township School District. You almost think enough of it that you want to be here to do something for it. And again, uh, no personal gain to you that I know of. Tell me, what are the strengths that you see of the district and the weaknesses? I know you only have a minute, so let's see what you can do with that. What do you see as the strengths and weaknesses of the district, especially after tonight? Dr. Enyer?
Well, I think one of the strengths that I've seen since I've decided to become more involved is the district is very involved in strategic planning, but also in measuring that and adapting it as it goes forth, making sure that they address issues such as retention of staff, uh, our teachers are, some of the roles paid around, uh, and we're lucky to have them. And, and they address these issues with a passion and fervor, and they have a relationship with the superintendent and the teachers that I think helps promote that. I think all of that together brings together reputation. That reputation of an excellent school district translates into, uh, a better town. It translates into higher property values. But most importantly, it translates into the people that will run and live and lead Barnegat in the future. I think they do a good job.
Thank you so much, Dr. Enyer. Anyone else want to address that? I don't know anything better for full teams. Do we have a group for full teams? That sounds like an answer. Mr. O'Brien?
Sure. So for our strengths, we have an excellent caring staff and administration who wants to provide our students with the best path to success. We finally have some modern facilities and equipment so students are prepared to enter the workforce. We have, uh, a, a computer lab, which is world-class. We now have a recording studio, which is world-class. We're offering technology to each student to have an individualized education. So if a student is struggling in one little portion of a learning standard, they get the focus they need to remediate that standard and keep on improving. We do have weaknesses. We do not have positive community involvement. Dirty politics and mudslinging cause people to not participate. Staff morale and pay is a tremendous problem in the district, which, as Mr. Sarno has pointed out, we're taking care of. And we have years and years of poor management and oversight that we have to overcome to, to fix all the sins of the past.
Anyone else? Ms. Washburn?
I think we've talked at length about many of the weaknesses that we have in our district right now, so I'd like to focus on the strengths, and I'll just talk about one weakness. Um, I think our strengths are our students, our staff, and our faculty. Ultimately, that's really what we're all here to support today, as well as, of course, all the people of Barnegat, but ultimately, uh, our students, staff, and our faculty are our strength. That's why we do what we do every day. That's why the parents have chosen this district to educate their children in, and I think that that's probably our biggest strength. Um, I would say that, uh, one of the weaknesses that I've identified in our town is access to, uh, technical programs inside our high school. Not talking about technology, I'm talking about technical education, what I've spent the last 13 years doing. Um, and we're not alone. I know that a lot of the districts across the state, um, many counties have a lack of technical education in their high schools available to their high schoolers. I know that we have access to VOTECs and things like that, but even the VOTECs can't handle, um, the influx of students that want to get involved in that.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you. Anybody else? Anybody else want to talk about strengths and weaknesses? Okay. Now we're going to go to the closing statements. You have two choices. You can talk about yourself, or you can complain about the other people. Okay, uh, I'm going to start with Carol Janey, you're first.
First, I would like to thank Stephanie for putting together this forum. It was informative for the public and those involved. As you have heard tonight, there are many important issues and decisions on the horizon that the Board of Education will have to address. That's why I think it's imperative to have individuals on the Board of Education who understand the importance of providing an education that addresses and supports our students to aspire to their highest goals while working together with the community as a whole to achieve what the parents of Barnegat expect in their education system. Thank you.
Thank you. You, I, I just want to make sure my timekeepers realize, they, they do have 90 seconds here. Okay. You, you made it already, but I was looking, I'm thinking, what if they don't realize it?
Again, my name is Morris Enyer. When I look at what we're doing, I think the unique combination of my skills, my experience in education, business, and technology will enable me to work successfully with members of the board, the staff, and the public to ensure that everybody's voice is heard. That's important if you want to achieve the best possible outcome in the school system. I will bring these experiences and knowledge to work with other BOE members and the administration to ensure the school district tracks and retains the best staff, evolves existing and creates new programs to provide a solid foundation, is cost-effective and fiscally responsible, that its goals and progress are monitored and reviewed, and that parents are informed and involved. We've heard strong opinions on important issues that must be resolved, and I give credit to the current board for taking time to listen to parents and not rush to judgments. However, it is important to remember that while issues like the health curriculum are important, they are only a small part of the education that students will encounter. The skills that they must master and be, to be successful in life make up the rest of that, and it's the most important part. We, as residents, parents, and board members, all have an obligation to successfully resolve issues by inclusive discussion and decision-making. Last but not least, I would also want to encourage you to vote for calling.
Sorry, Dr. Enyer, I asked you to finish. Mr. O'Brien?
Thanks again to Ms. Fawnin for, as well as the other candidates for participating event, and thank you to all voters that are listening and learning about what we have to offer. Offer results: Just this week, our Board of Education earned its board certification through the NJASBA Board Member Academy, first time ever for our district. Our pre-K program has earned a four-star quality rating. COVID and SIR grants were properly managed to fund one-to-one technology for the entire school district. The long-avoided Edward School is finally being addressed, and I look forward to ensuring that it becomes something our students and community can enjoy. The Citizens Advisory Committee was reinstated to hear the ongoing issues the district faces with the community. We heard results of that tonight. New math and ELA programs are giving our students customized learning paths to success. For the first time in over 10 years, our district passed CUSAC. Are we perfect? No, but we're heading in the right direction. When I am making my decisions, my commitment to you is that I will always consider the benefit to all district stakeholders, students, families, staff, and residents, all get a seat at the table. We are fixing problems caused by years of neglect and mismanagement. Our facilities are finally getting back into shape. Our student performance is making a turnaround. Unfortunately, three years ago, our district was forced into reconfiguration. Our district had been so poorly run by previous board leadership that our only option was to complete and total overhaul the system. We will not let it fall to such a state again. We believe in excellence for Barnegat, and you should also believe in Barnegat. We don't have any promises or emotional abuses in our campaign. We have results, strategy, and facts. Thank you again for your time. Please vote for Sean O'Brien, Juanji.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Uh, Mr. Hickey?
First off, I'm going to say thank you to everybody in the audience for coming out and being involved, everybody online, everybody that's here. Thank you to Stephanie and her wonderful staff that came out and gave their time tonight as well. First and foremost, our students, our staff, our community, that's the most important thing, to the excellence for Barnegat and the Believe in Barnegat tickets. We believe in a strong, dedicated community leadership, and every member of our tickets have proven community leadership in various organizations around the town. We demonstrate a proven history of confronting difficult issues, and we provide real support to our educators so they can solve problems and make our schools the best facilities possible. Tonight, you heard our opponents tell you that they identified problems that no one else is tracking, and that's a fabrication. Their flyers and their posts are riddled with false statistics and assessments that are just aren't true.
aren't true. But the most important fact is their proposed solutions are empty, and they're going to be very expensive promises, and it's going to wreak havoc and instability throughout the district, and especially your tax bill. But I will say, you will learn from our track record and our answers tonight that excellence for Barnegat is definitely here to lead, and we're here to give our students and staff the best experience possible, and we are here to ensure the resources that our taxpayers provide are used in the most effective and responsible manner possible. Thank you for your continued support, and we just appreciate all the discussions with all the candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Dr. Beck?
Again, I'll reiterate, thank you, Stephanie, all the members of the community here, the candidates, this was definitely an informative evening, and I hope you guys all have got to learn a little bit about each and every one of us individually. You know, I come and sit up here because I want to help drive this district forward and this community forward. I have a vested interest in it because I have young children in the school. I want to see them succeed, I want to see your children succeed, I want to see this town succeed. I want to be able to bring and bridge that gap between community and the district. We've done that through the community, the Citizens Advisory Committee, we've held the administration accountable, and we've made changes. I believe that the administration and the board is working hard to bring this community and this district forward, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done. I want to bring a, as I've said multiple times, a level-headed, calm, collective voice to the board, but also to the community. I'll always answer your questions openly, honestly, I'm not going to hide anything, I'm not going to kowtow to anybody and do what they want. We're going to do what's best for the students, the staff, and the district. We'll work hard, it's a tireless, thankless, non-paid job, as Stephanie pointed out, so any one of these candidates sitting up here, we're all kind of crazy for wanting to do this, but that means we really care and we really want to do this for the community.
Thank you, Dr. Beck. Ms. Washburn?
Thank you, Stephanie, for hosting tonight's forum. Barnegat, I appeal to you as a parent tonight first and foremost, if you want someone that truly cares about our children rather than a political agenda, vote for Nate Lauren Washburn, ten G, on election night. I am passionate about making sure our parents' voices are heard. We need fresh eyes in our school, the kind of fresh eyes that recognize where change is needed and work to enact that change. We need to use our resources wisely. I am running for a one-year seat, and I'm not naive to the fact that all of our issues and challenges will not be overcome in one year, but we must start somewhere. We have so much good in our schools, our incredible faculty and staff, our amazing teachers, and our inspiring students, but we have a lot that needs to be improved upon as well. We have parents that care so much, but many times our concerns go unheard. We'll bring my leadership and educational experience to this position to make sure your voice is heard.
Thank you, Ms. Washburn. Mr. Sherman?
I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who attended tonight, and hope it gave you some public, some clarity on the issues facing our district and where we as candidates stand on the issues, and how we would address them if elected. In my eyes, there is nothing more important in a community than preparing its students for their future, and our local school district does this by giving the students the tools and knowledge they need through their education to assure they reach all their goals and aspirations in life. I believe our school district has several areas where improvements are needed and longer than they are in address by our elected board. The greater the negative impact it will have on our students, I truly believe the biggest difference between our ticket and the incumbent ticket is on our reconfiguration stance. They 100% support it and want to continue running our district under the model, even as our student achievement continues to fall further under the state average in most categories since it was adopted. Students' continuity also pays a major role in our ticket wanting to remove the reconfiguration, students and relationships with the staff, or building pride in their community school. When you also add in the transportation issues that have increased substantially since the reconfiguration began, and many kids having to walk to school that are no longer right in their community, I can see why parents continue to find fault in the stance of our opponents who support continuing the reconfiguration. On November 8th, I say to the reconfiguration, say no to the sex education curriculum in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Say yes to building tomorrow's leaders by voting Sean, Jean, Sherman, and Washburn.
Mr. Sherman, thank you. Ms. Angus?
Thank you, Stephanie, for hosting tonight. It's appreciated that you put all the candidates out here so that we can, the viewers and the taxpayers and voters are all able to see where we stand. One of the qualities that people either love me or hate me for is my ability to research, articulate, and approach issues or conflicts head-on. I don't have very much of a filter. I can hopefully utilize this, though, in a positive way, to weigh all the issues and come to the meetings with the best solution to these problems. I ask you to remember to vote for Believe in Barnegat and Excellence for Barnegat on November 8th, to finally put a Board of Education that can take the outside factors away, remove the politics, and make the decisions that are best for our future. I want to watch my son be raised in this district and go on to a college education or a technical school education and be able to say that he was a Bengal. And the only way to do that is to have a Board of Education who cares about our staff or students and our faculty first. That's going to be your Excellence for Barnegat and Believe in Barnegat tickets.
Thank you, Ms. Angus. Mr. Sarno, you've got the winning member.
Finally. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Stephanie for hosting this event tonight, as she's done the last previous few years, and those of you that are in attendance tonight, again, thank you for coming out. I think most of you heard tonight, there are stark differences between each ticket and different candidates about where we stand on the issues, and our approaches on how we address them and fix them. I believe many of the district's current issues are tied to one terrible decision. It was when then-board president Mike Hickey pushed through the reconfiguration in the district. Parents in town had just overwhelmingly voted out three long-term board members to show how strong they were against implementing the reconfiguration. The elected board was split on adopting it, and many voted no, and there was no long-term proof that it actually produced results. Best board three years, and you have a district, and you have district morale at an all-time low, staff shortages because people don't want to work in Barnegat, longtime teachers leaving for other districts, our graduation rate has been below the state average the last three years, students that are not college-ready, and it's fallen below the state average there, and declining test scores in most of our schools. Mr. O'Brien recently commented in a post about the option of switching back from the reconfiguration, saying that the tax burden would be insurmountable. We don't believe that's the case. I was on the board when they said we'd never pull out a Southern Regional High School because it was too expensive. Well, three years later, we built this high school, and I was on the board. We will give the administration notice that if elected, within three months, we expect a plan to switch back from the reconfiguration with K through twelve.
Mr. Sarno, we're finished, sorry.
Yep.
My turn to give my closing remarks, which are twenty seconds. I would like to express my gratitude for all of you, first of all, because it's a big deal that you've decided to run. I also want to express my gratitude to the superintendent of schools, Dr. Brian Latwis, for allowing us to use the high school to host this important forum. The logistics in putting together this event, I cannot leave out two important people, Sandy Altamari and Colette Bach, because I could not figure out how to do certain, like your main tags, and I was lucky enough, but they did that for me. Most importantly, those people up there are technology people, their names are Kelly, Tom, and Stephanie, or someone named Stephanie. I don't know if Stephanie's up there tonight, but they're, I am extremely grateful for their help. Now, I would be remiss if I did not thank these three individuals down here, who, when I said, I can't get kids to do this, would you please help me? My very best friend, Nancy Share, and my two dear friends, Joe Fergola and John Generali, thank you so much for your help. Thank you. 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 Thank you.